Now, it is my honor to introduce to you the Dean of New York Law School and Citizens Union Board Member, Anthony Crowell.
Thanks so much, Rachel. Appreciate that as always. I also want to recognize Rick Schaefer, who's here, and Betsy Gottbaum, who's on her way into the key leadership role here at Citizens Union very soon. And it's just my great pleasure to welcome you all to New York Law School, or as we like to say, "New York's Law School." And what a great moment for us to say we are New York's Law School and we're entertaining such an auspicious event. We're really proud to partner with Citizens Union and certainly appreciate the cooperation of the League of Women Voters, NIIPerg, and Reinvent Albany. And as you know, CU is one of the oldest civic organizations in the city, and this has been a very nice tradition now. This is the second cycle in a row that we've had a City Council Speaker Forum, and these forums are critically important. We feel a certain responsibility, obviously, as New York's Law School, to engage on the key legal and policy matters that affect the city. And certainly, the race for Speaker is the most consequential process for setting the direction of our city's future outside that of the election of the mayor. And luckily, this is one of numerous fora that feature the candidates, and tonight there's an additional focus on the issues surrounding good government. As I think all of you in the room know, the Speaker has enormous influence over the entire ideological and political direction of the city, but also in how the government operates at its most basic levels. Each Speaker historically takes a different approach to City Council operations, which includes the openness of the legislative process, collaboration with the rank and file, deciding the latitude given to committee chairs, and so on. The Speaker, through their power to control legislation, will have influence over what types of legislation gets introduced, including legislation that potentially can make government even more transparent and accessible to New Yorkers. So I commend all the council members assembled here tonight for putting themselves to this scrutiny and for their willingness to publicly share a vision and a set of goals that they will pursue should they be selected. So thank you all for being here. Your attendance here is wonderful. It's overwhelming, and it shows that New Yorkers are invested in the civic process that governs the city, and it's truly wonderful to see you all. So thanks for being here, and I hope tonight is very beneficial.
Thank you, Dean Crowell. Once again, because a few of you have asked me for it, the password to register is G-L-P-E-F. And now that we have that taken care of, it is my pleasure to introduce you to the moderator of tonight's event. Ben Max is the Executive Editor of Gotham Gazette, an independent news publication of Citizens Union. Thank you, and welcome, Ben.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for being here tonight. Thank you, obviously, to Rachel and Citizens Union, and to New York Law School and Dean Crowell, and really to all of you for being here, the co-sponsors of the event, and WBAI Radio, which is broadcasting tonight's event live. So council members, if you can make sure to keep your language radio appropriate, that'd be great. So we are live on WBAI. So I'm the editor of Gotham Gazette, as Rachel mentioned, publication of Citizens Union Foundation, and we exist in large part to cover city and state politics, including a big focus on the City Council. So it's certainly a pleasure for me to be here with seven of the eight candidates to become the next City Council Speaker. For those of you who don't know, the Council Speaker will be chosen by the 51 members of the City Council, although there are lots of outside influencers, some of which we'll discuss tonight, but ultimately, in January, when the new class of the City Council is seated and inaugurated, the 51 members will vote on the next Speaker. We have our candidates here tonight, and we'll get right into our first question, but let me introduce them quickly first. Starting closest to me, we have Robert Cornegy, we have Jumani Williams, we have Jimmy Van Bremer, Corey Johnson, Ydonis Rodriguez, Donovan Richards, and Mark Levine. We can welcome them with one more round of applause. And I just want to note that Richie Torres is the other candidate. He had an event in his district long scheduled that prevented him from being here tonight, so he's not skipping out on us for anything other than that obligation. So in lieu of opening remarks, we'll get going, and for this one, we'll start actually to the far end, to Councilmember Levine. A two-part question. What do you think your City Council colleagues think of you after your time in the Council so far? What's your impression of your reputation among your colleagues who will be choosing the next Speaker? And what is one example where you've shown leadership that qualifies you to become Speaker?
Well, thank you, Ben, for hosting us, and thanks to Citizens Union and the other sponsors. I've actually done this very scientifically, and I've taken a survey of all my colleagues, and 50 out of 50 have told me they think I should be the next Speaker. So this is kind of just an academic exercise at this point. Look, in all seriousness, I think my colleagues would call me someone who gets things done in the body. And the most prominent example of that is a bill that I was pleased to lead with my partner, co-lead sponsor Vanessa Gibson, which established a right to counsel for tenants in housing court in New York City, making New York City the first place in America to do that. So no longer will a tenant lose their home because they were evicted without having an attorney. And that was a three-and-a-half-year process. Every one of my colleagues on this dais were co-sponsors of that bill and were active in making it a reality. And I hold it up as an example of my leadership, which is strategic, which doesn't stop until we get to win, and I'm happy we got that on behalf of tenants in New York City.
Thank you. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you. Well, first, they'll say I'm beautiful, but I'll say fair, definitely good temperament, and I can work with everyone. I don't think there's anyone, at least in my tenure, who can say anything bad about me. I will say, just in my everyday experience being the zoning chair of the Council, it gives me an opportunity to really work with members from all 50 districts on issues relating to housing and other issues that affect their local communities. So I'll say, just through that experience, every day fighting for members has been my number-one priority. Today, we held a hearing on manufacturing and self-storage, and my job is to represent the interests of the members and to negotiate with the administration on these issues. One of the biggest issues, I'll say, that I worked on mandatory inclusionary housing and zoning for quality and affordability, which really affects the entire landscape of the city, has been one experience that really has given me the opportunity to work with people from all walks of life, from real estate industry, from nonprofits, from everyday New Yorkers. So I always like to equate it to, I've worked on issues from East New York to East Midtown, and that's the sort of leadership I think members are looking for in people from around the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I think that the first thing that my colleagues will know is that I'm going to be the Speaker with the accent. I'm going to be the Speaker that came to the city to watch dishes. I owned Henry Restaurants in 1983, and from there on, going to City College, became a student leader to cover City College in 1991. As a Council, I can say chairing the Committee of Transportation, most of my colleagues recognize that I have elevated the role of the Transportation Committee, making the streets safer for pedestrians and cyclists. But my colleagues also know that I am being a fighter to close the gap that divides our society, that I will never give up to change our school system from being the most segregated one in the whole nation to a school system that provides opportunity to prepare our students to be the next middle class.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Ben, and thank you all for being here tonight. I would say that what I hope my colleagues think about me is that I'm someone that is hardworking and communicative and collegial in many ways, someone that people can work with. And the thing that I'm most proud of over the last four years is, I believe I've passed 29 bills into law since I was sworn into the Council, more than nearly any member of the body. And those bills have had one consistent theme, which is to help New York's most marginalized and vulnerable, whether it be allowing transgender New Yorkers to get accurate birth certificates, or helping domestic violence victims who are in homeless shelters, or working on behalf of animals in New York City in our shelters. The theme of the work that I've done legislatively over the last four years has been trying to help New Yorkers that were oppressed, marginalized, and disadvantaged, and that's what I'm most proud of.
Thank you. Councilmember Van Bremer?
Thank you very much. I too hope that my colleagues believe that I'm an incredibly hard worker and also someone who's incredibly passionate about the things that I believe in and that I'm a fighter for those things that I really believe in. Look, I was born and raised in a union household in Queens. My stepfather was a janitor, and my mother was a supermarket worker. We were homeless for a period. I realized that I was gay when I was 10 or 11 and didn't come out until I was almost 20, so I've known struggle and I've known how to fight. If I wasn't a fighter, I wouldn't be here on this stage with all of these fine people running for Speaker of the City Council. And in terms of my leadership, I'm really proud of the work that we've done on libraries and culture in the city of New York. We have dramatically increased by literally hundreds of millions of dollars funding to libraries and cultural in the city of New York just over the last few years alone, and that's not always the easiest issue to pass through and to get dramatic increases in funding for. We've done that together as a body, as colleagues, but I'm proud to have led the way. That's one aspect of my leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you very much for having us and everybody who helped put this together. I did see Matt Kawab. I wanted to shout him out, who used to be in the Council, and thank him for the work that he did. From conversations I've had, most of my colleagues believe that I'm honest, which is important. They believe that I'm sincere, and if I say something, I'm not going to go back on my word. Some of the things that have been coming out that actually have been posed as a negative is I'm too much of an activist, I'm too bold, I'm out there. And although it's been posed as a negative, I actually think it's a positive, and so I welcome it and I embrace it, and I think it's part of the toolbox that I have, part of the tool that's in the toolbox. We need a complete toolbox, not just one. I've passed the most legislation of anybody in the body besides the Speaker. You need to be a leader to do that. My leadership style has helped us guide so many conversations in this city, whether it was passing the Community Safety Act, whether recently passing the Construction Site Safety Act, whether it was getting funding, the only funding and new initiative from the last term, whether it was voting against Mih and getting a housing award for that, the Housing of the Year Award, pushing us, continuing to push us. We're in a progressive state. It's easy to do progressive things when you have a lot of money. There's going to come a time where we don't, and I think we need that spirit, that activist spirit, to make sure we do things right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Cornegy?
Thank you, Ben. So jokingly, my colleagues say that I'm head and shoulders above the rest. But substantively, I think the one word that's used uniformly with my colleagues is temperament. It takes a particular type of temperament to lead leaders, and I've demonstrated that temperament. Listen, I sit on five different committees and chair one, and I'm probably, you know, have the distinction of passing a bill in every single one of those committees. And that's not difficult. We're going to talk about probably legislative reform, and I've demonstrated the ability to be solid on the issues that are germane to my community, but solid on issues that are germane to the entire city of New York.
Thank you. So for those initial answers, we had about one minute per candidate. Some of the time, I'm going to ask you to do about 30 seconds when I don't think we need to take up all that time, and I told the candidates earlier tonight, but for those of you in the audience to know, sometimes I'm just going to ask a few of the candidates to answer something and not have all seven answer every single question so we can get to a few more topics. So we'll see how that goes. The second one is for everybody, and this time we'll start in the middle with Councilmember Johnson. What is the Council Speaker's role in terms of oversight of the other 50 members? What part of the job is making sure that the others are doing their jobs with things like constituent services, showing up to committee hearings?
Budget, legislation, and oversight. And part of the way we do that is empowering individual members to carve out the issues that are important to them in the committees they chair, while at the same time trying to arrive at consensus so that the body can move forward, not always in one voice, but when it's possible, to ensure that there is consensus and we're speaking in a united way. Each member has issues that they care about, that they're passionate about, and their real-life experience, they bring that to the table. I think this is a way to harness that, empower the members, and ensure that the Council remains a respected institution. We need to be more diverse. You don't see a single woman sitting up here tonight. We're losing two LGBT members, and we need to do better. The Speaker needs to ensure that all voices are heard.
Councilmember Van Bremer?
So I would echo my colleagues' comments, but also add, I think the role of the Speaker is to make sure that members have all of the resources that they need to achieve their goals and also to make sure that everyone is getting what they need to succeed in the body. I think the Speaker has got to be in touch with every single member, making sure that they are getting the help, the resources from central staff and otherwise that they need to succeed, and where there might be issues, the Council Speaker has a role to play in getting involved and making sure that they have those things that they absolutely must have to be the most successful Council members that they do, empowering the members, all of the members, to achieve the goals that they set out to achieve when they ran is probably the single most important thing that any single one of us can do.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, of course, echo everything that's been said. I'm asking to be the steward of this body. And for me, obviously, first of all, we have a chartered mandate that deals with budget, that deals with land use, and I'll say also oversight. We basically want to be the counterbalance to the executive. Coming from, I'm a community organizer by trade, and that's all about empowerment. So directly to your question, my job, I believe, is to make sure that we come together and have a consensus so we can speak in one voice, but also to empower all of the members to address the needs in their specific constituency. What I've found in most constituencies is that people generally want the same things. They want to make sure they have good housing, they want to make sure they have safe streets, they want to make sure they have food on the table and good schools. There's something in this community that's blocking that, and so my job is to help that council member represent that district and deal with the specific blockages in that community. And together, if we do that, we'll have a great city, and we'll be able to provide the oversight that's needed and push back, work with the mayor when we need to, and push back when it's necessary.
Councilmember Cornegy?
So I think the primary role is to protect this member body, its sanctity and the institution, and to recognize and cultivate the talent that we have. I think in times past, we've got regimented in a particular way of being and not been able to assess every member, not only their needs, but their talents, in order to move the body forward. So it's a little bit of a coaching aspect to it, and that's to know every single member and be able to get the best out of every single member.
Councilmember Levine, down to you.
All right, thank you. The City Council needs to be an independent, united, empowered body. That's how we can fulfill our charter mandate, to be a co-equal branch of government vis a vis the executive, and that does require a strong speakership. But there's no contradiction between that and empowering members so that they can introduce legislation with a very clear, transparent, predictable bill drafting process, one of the most important reforms that I think we need to advance in the next term. We need members to have adequate resources in their districts and at City Hall. We need committee chairs to have the ability to set their agenda and to truly lead their committee. There's no contradiction between offering members the freedom to lead and having a Council Speaker who can bring the body together towards a common agenda, and that is my vision.
Councilmember Richards?
I just see the job of the Speaker as being the gatekeeper for the city and obviously pushing back against any things that can harm the health of the city. And I think I'll just touch on three different areas, I think, that can help strengthen. So when you talk about constituent services, one, making sure that members have, you know, funding to properly staff their offices. There are members like myself who may have to have two different district offices due to the geography of their districts. So we want to make sure we're empowering members in a way that offers resources for them to effectively be able to carry out their mission on constituent services. I think there's ways for us to strengthen the community engagement unit of the Council a little bit more. I also think for complicated issues like the land use stuff that's going on around the city, you know, members don't necessarily understand zoning all the time, and we may need to make sure that we are empowering members with more resources directly by assigning particular staff to assist them through rezoning processes as well. So that's one example of how I think we could strengthen the Council's oversight role in offices.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
We have to increase the oversight capacity of each 51 council member. First, I believe that each council member should be entitled to call the Commissioner of each agency that they oversight to hear him. It shouldn't be solely to the Speaker to decide if they will put the pressure for that Commissioner to come to hear or not. They should come. Second, I believe that in order to empower, we also need to provide more support to the council member. I believe that the central office of the Council should pay for all OTPS to each member. Right now, each council member receives $430,000. That money has to be used to pay for the rent. I believe that the central office of the Council should be paying for the rent of each office so that the council member should be using those $430,000 to pay for more staff. The last thing that I would say is that I will work hard to bring more consistency to the member, and I will work hard to change the charter so that we will get three terms for each council member. I grandfathered the three terms. I would not be fighting for myself, but I believe that every single council member, that they are here for two terms, they should have the right to be there for three terms.
So I was actually going to get to this in a little bit, that you, Councilmember Rodriguez, you've recently called, you said that at a different forum, and I was going to ask you to follow up on that. So does anybody else want to jump in on term limits? Does anybody agree with Councilmember Rodriguez that it should be extended to three terms? Does anybody disagree?
Yeah, I actually agree. I've been kind of batting this around for a few years. I actually spoke to some of the good government groups about it, and there was actually a lot of folks that agreed, for reasons people might not think. One, I think it's unfair that some of us had a third term and some colleagues didn't. Two, as good government, it doesn't fully make sense that you want us to provide the balance to the mayor, but the entire city government is going to be up at the same time. Two-thirds of the Council will be up at the same time as the mayor. We have to think about the impact that's going to have on how we want the government to function. So it's an issue that I've been thinking about and trying to figure out the best way to address, because I know there were people who were happy that two terms occurred. I want to make sure it doesn't seem like we're doing things to help ourselves, but really trying to push forward the good government message, what is best to make sure that government is representing folks in the best way possible.
One or two more folks want to jump in. Councilmember Levine, then we'll come to Councilmember Cornegy.
I agree with my colleagues, but this is a decision that has to be made by the people. The two-term limit was put in through multiple voter referenda, and if it were to be changed, it would have to be changed by the same mechanism, so it would be incumbent on supporters to make that case to the public. Probably a challenging case to make, but I think there's a good argument that losing 38 members on one day at the end of this four years is not in the best interest, but voters would ultimately make that decision.
I agree with that.
Councilmember Cornegy?
So yes, it should be a referendum, but what I want to add is that, you know, every day, we're required to fight for the rights of workers and whether or not they have protections under the law as it relates to everything from a fair wage to employment. So it's funny, because the city charter has it that it takes 10 years to vest in the city and get a pension. And ironically, members are only given two terms and eight years. So logistically, I'm not even arguing for the third term, just saying, logistically, in support of the members, it doesn't really make sense. And what it boils down to is, what is the talent pool that you search from in years to come? So arguably, if I was to tell my wife I'm going to give her the best years of my life, eight of the best years arguably are because I'm the smartest at this point and have enough energy to do this job, would she allow me to take it, knowing that I wouldn't be able to provide resources for my family in my retirement? Probably not. So who you're going to get is someone who's really, really young, or someone who is very, very seasoned, and not much in between. So I think we have to look at it from that standpoint as well.
Councilmember Van Bremer, then we're going to move on.
Thank you very much. So I just want to say, I've changed over the course of my life and now believe in term limits and believe in them for every office, but I do believe that 12 years is a much more appropriate time for members to serve in the New York City Council, given the work that we do, given the length of time that it takes for, for example, capital projects to proceed and to be completed. And so I definitely support that, but like my colleagues, I believe most have said, I believe that it should be done through referendum, and it would be most effective, most long-lasting, and most supported by everyone if it were done by the voters.
Ben, can I say one quick thing? So I agree with everything that was said. I think it should be done by referenda if we're going to do it. And lastly, I would say, if you're going to extend term limits, it should just be for members of the municipal body, not for borough presidents and for the citywide positions. I think eight years is enough for executive positions, but 12 years is appropriate for members of legislative body.
We'll start with Councilmember Richards. What's one specific thing to make the City Council or city government more transparent that you would push as Speaker?
I think strengthening the Oversight and Investigations Committee is something that I primarily would love to focus on. I think that the Council does have a charter mandate to ensure that we are actually holding agencies more accountable, and I think that this committee has not blossomed as much as I would love for it to actually do. I think that we can use it to look at the issues around homelessness a little bit more. We can look at the Department of Justice a little bit more. We can look at the Department of Aging, all the different things that are affecting citywide in that context. I think we can look at this particular committee and really use it in a more efficient manner.
Councilmember Rodriguez, the question is, what's one thing as Speaker you would push to do to make the City Council or city government more transparent to the public?
I believe that we need to be more accountable. Electoral officials, we should know that, you know, who are the ones that bring us to office. And I believe that sometimes we look at good government as institutions that not necessarily we can be in the same side when we should. No, we should work with the good government group, those who are advocating for women rights, those who are advocating for more equality of education, those who are saying we want to see, you know, how we use spending money. I believe that we've been able to make good progress in the last four years under this leadership of Melissa Maberrito and this group that I can say is the most progressive class that we have ever had at the Council, but I believe that we can still increase the level of transparency at the Council.
Is there something specific that you would try to enact?
Well, I think that we need to be, be more transparent when it comes to how we use the money. I think that the destination that the council member are receiving on discretionary funding is good use. This is something that as a Speaker, I will continue supporting my colleagues, but I believe that we have to bring more transparency on how we use every single dollar that we are given.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I would say a few things. One, I think we've done something good already during this term that I believe everyone up here voted in favor of, which was, we agreed to put our financial disclosure reports online for the public to see. So right now, anyone can go online and see what we're invested in, if we own property, and that's available to the public on the Conflict and Inocence Board website. So that was bringing a level of transparency to the public that didn't exist before. In the past, you would have to foil it to get information from your elected officials. We have an $85 billion budget, around $85 billion budget, and the way we spend our money in the city when it comes to schools and transportation, infrastructure projects, right now, it's not easy for the public to decipher and discern how money is spent, how the large amounts that are spent, the units of appropriation, capital projects. When we adopt our budget every single year, we should adopt it in a way so the public can easily search online and see how their taxpayer dollars are being spent by the Council and by the mayor.
Councilmember Van Bremer?
Thank you. I would, on day one, work with my colleagues to implement gender and race audits, both of the City Council and of every city agency, and make that information publicly accessible and available to every single person so that we can use transparency as an agent of social change and make sure that both in the body and then at every single city agency, we are doing everything we can to make sure that pay and promotions and all of those things are done equitably and, if it's transparent, fairly. This is already a Council that's down to 11 women out of 50, 51. That is something that would be unthinkable even five, 10 years ago. We've got to do everything we can, particularly in this moment in time, to make sure that we are transparent and making sure that we are equal with respect to women and people of color, absolutely day one.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm proud, last term, one of the bills I got passed was a resolution that had an effect of law, but actually got us to put Schedule C and other budgetary items online and made them searchable, so I'm proud of that. It's issues I've been working on. I believe the question had to do with...
I believe the question had to do with how the public is interfacing with us and that's an important question. There's a few items, but I think the hearing process needs to be reviewed. I think it's confusing, it's not consistent. I'd love to work with my colleagues to figure out, how do we make the hearing process more predictable? Perhaps there's certain days that happen every single year so people understand, people will understand when they need to come in to testify so they don't have to stay there for 12 hours, 14 hours, whatever it is that people sometimes wait. Make sure that we can get more of our hearings online in a way that people can see them and they don't have to search. So those are the type of things that I want to work on. I would probably start with talking to my colleagues about the hearing process.
Councilmember Carnegie?
So I wouldn't have to wait. I have a bill coming up for vote in the next state of meeting, which is a workforce disclosure bill, which would require that every contractor or subcontractor doing business with the city of New York discloses its entire, the demographics of its workforce. So we would know who is being employed, where the money is going and how our money is being spent and where it's being spent. There are a lot of dollars that are alleged that are leaving the city and we just don't know whether that's true or not. So this workforce disclosure bill would make sure that the agencies or the organizations that we are contracting with disclose the demographics of their workforce.
And lastly on this one, Councilmember Levine?
Sure. Well, the lack of transparency on the budget is a problem for the public, it's a problem for the city council. We have a charter mandated power to approve the budget. We don't know much about what's in that budget. We have units of appropriation that stretch into the billions and we have no more detail than that. There's a unit of appropriation in the police department called operations, which is over $2 billion. There's a unit of appropriations at the Department of Education, which is called general education, which is $6 billion. And those departments can move around money within those lines freely. We as legislators and the public don't know what's in them. Federal government is much more transparency. We can and must do better for the benefit of our body and for the public.
So speaking of transparency, you're all lobbied all the time. I see it all the time outside of City Hall as you're walking in and out and there's, I'm sure, many, many other instances. So on lobbying, and we're going to start down here with Councilmember Carnegie this time, is there something else the city and the city council can do to be more transparent about how often and how much you are lobbied?
You have to be very skillful with doing that because there are laws that protect, as we stand, you know, certain information. I would like to definitely explore ways to make that possible. We are constantly, you know, lobbied, as you mentioned, and it's an exercise sometimes in futility to get through that gauntlet to get to our meetings. I would like to see how we could potentially do that, especially since it's almost an open air market to do it. So those lobbyists are not coming in any form that makes sense. I think there is some transparency in the fact that they're on city property and generally you can see who they are. So they're not, at least as far as I'm concerned, they're not meeting with me in my district behind closed doors. So you can generally see who they are, but there has to be a way of recording that process. I just would like to see how we could possibly do that.
Back to you, Councilmember Levine?
Sure. Look, we have, we have strong rules that regulate disclosure of lobbying, contributions to candidates and lobbying activity, but there are weaknesses. And one glaring one is in the area of legal defense funds, where there's essentially no regulatory guidelines on the ability of a lobbyist or someone doing business with the city to give the legal defense funds, which should be treated really no differently from campaign contributions. And I actually have a bill that would establish a regime in such cases so that people who otherwise couldn't raise tens of thousands of dollars for a mayor or a city council member or borough president would face similar restrictions and similar mandates on public disclosure in the case of these legal defense entities.
Councilmember Richards?
I'll just, I agree with Councilmember Carnegie certainly on recording. Listen, I think we have a plethora of people who come before us day in and day out and, you know, some of them represent interests, different interests. And I don't have an issue with anyone knowing and disclosing who I meet with behind closed doors, whether it's on land use matters, whether it's on budget issues. We should be more transparent in this area.
Is that something you would push for as Speaker?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'm comfortable in the way of how we interact with the lobbyists going to the council. For me, in average, as I say, being at the council for eight years, all I can talk about and I see many of the lobbyists sitting in the audience here too, some of you guys. I think that they're doing a good job. Most of them represent good clients. Those are clients that they are advocating for them to bring good resources to promote a lot of good programs around education, art, music. For me, I, you know, anyone can foil the information of any meeting that we have as a council. If there's anything that we need to do to opening more of those information, definitely I will work on it. But I think in average, in my experience in eight years and few days that I have at the council, I can say that I personally see most of the lobbyists doing the job at the council and so want that they are very responsible and we work very well with it.
Councilmember Johnson?
I think that Councilmember Kalos deserves credit for his bill that said that lobbyist contributions that are bundled should not qualify for matching funds. That was a good step that the council took recently. One other thing I think that we should consider is an incoming colleague of ours, Councilmember -elect Keith Powers, who was a former lobbyist himself. During his campaign, I believe he published it on Gotham Gazette, actually, an outline related to how he is going to conduct himself as it relates to his former firm, lobbyists in general, the meetings he takes. And what was just discussed by some of my colleagues is the mayor right now discloses meetings he has with lobbyists himself at City Hall. He puts it on a website. He puts the date, the lobbyist's name and the meeting topic. I think whoever of the speaker or the council is should consider doing the same thing.
Councilmember Van Bramer?
Yeah, I would just echo what Councilmember Johnson just said. Look, our schedules, our daily schedules are in fact public information and can and have been foiled so that folks can see what we are doing in our district offices and our city hall offices. We can and should look for ways to make that even more transparent.
Should it take a foil? I mean, you know...
No, that's what I was just about to get to. We should absolutely make that more transparent, not require a foil. Obviously, there's personal information like doctor's appointments and things that would get redacted, but what I have provided through a foil in the past, I would readily want to supply to the public. It's absolutely public information. It's taxpayer-funded offices, taxpayer-funded staff, and obviously if folks want to, they should be able to see the meetings that we're taking, who we're taking them with. And I think that in this transparent era, that would be good government and absolutely what we should do and I'd try and make that happen as Speaker.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, can I just ask you, I remember the anecdotal part, just the question again.
What would you do to make lobbying more transparent? Is there something that needs to be done and what would you do if so?
I think I would be Speaker right now if I could figure out how to get a tunnel to get away from the lobbyists, particularly during budget season. My colleagues, I'm sure, would love that. But seriously, the question is important. We do get bombarded by lobbyists and I would say some of it is, it's a little frustrating at times, but it works, right? So that, the annoyance of it is a part of the job and it works. Partly, I just want to make sure, I'm trying to figure out how to get some people who don't have lobbyists access to the same level playing field to make sure that they can speak to us in the same way. Two, I have done some work in this. I had two bills that dealt with disclosure of a conflict of interest, maintain the records and actually making sure the entities that do business with the city are not hiding under other entities. But just to be clear, we do get some good information from lobbyists. We do get information from a whole host of folks. So we don't want to just take a whole segment of people out. But I agree, we have to have a better way of being transparent. I'm always welcome to ideas to how to do that. Those bills came from ideas. In my office, if you come in, you can see I have books of people I've met with. You have to sign in who you came to see and why, and that record is readily available. So those are things I'm personally doing and I'd love to try to figure out ways how to make it better.
Thank you. We're going to start with Councilmember Rodriguez this time. On the issue of transparency in lobbying, to build on this a little further, each of you has, if I'm not mistaken, each of you has hired a political consultancy of some kind, I'm not sure if they're all registered as lobbyists, to help you run this speaker's race. A, why do you need a political consultant to help run the speaker's race? And B, how can the public be sure that that specific consultancy won't have undue influence over you if you're the speaker?
Well, I believe that, first of all, I don't have a political consultant yet. If I decided to do it and using the, you know, any recommended that I can register at the city and the, or the state level, I decided to spend for the speaker's race. Everything is about, if I'm allowed to do it, that the first thing that I had to ask myself and how to do it. I believe that this is a very competitive race and we're looking to, we are working to become, you know, the next speaker of the council, as you say, is a big responsibility. And I think that sometimes you need to rely on the people that help us to pull your plan together, pull your strategy together. That's what I can say.
And how can you be assured that political consultants, lobbyists that you might have some relationship with, don't have undue influence if you're the speaker?
I believe it's all about being fair to everyone. I believe as a speaker, I will be working to be sure that, you know, I will dedicate time to meet with individuals, to look at clients coming in front of my desk, that they present good project to our, to our city. As a speaker, my agenda is going to be to build a New York city for all. And in order to accomplish that goal, in order to be sure that education is provided at the same, same quality of education to every single student, I will be sure that I will be dedicating my time to meet individual regardless who is the lobbyist that bring those clients.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
The question is about folks that we've hired...
Why do you need a consultancy to run for speaker and how do you make sure that that consultancy doesn't have undue influence?
So I, very open about it, it's on our, it's on our campaign finance report. So I hired Metropolitan Strategies to handle communications related to my speaker's run. They've helped me deal with the press and messaging and that's why I hired them. I wasn't, I didn't think it was probably appropriate to have my staffs, which is understaffed in many ways, spend all of their time working on the speaker's race. They need to spend time helping constituents and doing the work we do in the district every single day. The thing we just talked about, which is coming up with a more transparent way on folks that we've hired in the past or paid money to through campaign finance funds to disclose that. Right now, if a lobbyist or any individual bundles money for us, that needs to be disclosed online. Right now, our schedules, as was said, are foilable and the public can see them. I actually think it would be interesting, I think the public would actually be very impressed with how busy we all are. If you saw what our schedules are seven days a week, you would see that we all work very, very hard in our districts and at City Hall.
You can start posting those.
I mean, mine are actually, I think two years of mine are posted online. Someone foiled them and they posted themselves. So you can search and see. So I think you can come up with ways to ensure that we strengthen the regulations and laws that are in place right now. And also, as I said in the previous answer, as the mayor puts his schedule online with lobbyists, the topic, the time and the date, the next speaker should consider the same exact thing so that the public knows who the speaker is meeting with.
Councilmember Van Bramer?
Same here. Several months of my schedules are also online and...
The same person foiled it?
I think so. And I want people to see our schedules because again, like Councilmember Johnson said, this council works incredibly hard. Members of the city council are dedicating their entire lives to this job and I want people to see just what we are all trying to accomplish for the people of the city of New York. I've hired PITHIA, again, as a communications team, not as a political team. They are not registered lobbyists. All of this is transparent and reportable and readily available. I think that with all of this being publicly available, you can see who we're working with, how much we're paying them, and then you can also see who is lobbying. Now, in my case, my consultants are not also lobbyists, but I think that we are doing a lot to make sure that there's integrity in the body, integrity in the process, and I feel good about the work that we're doing. For example, we worked on this forum so that my answers could be the best answers at this forum. So it's well worth the money.
Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. I believe that I'm battle-tested, I'm collaborative, I have a great activist spirit and I have a great body of work from which to stand on that I'm very proud, particularly in some contentious issues that I've helped navigate the body and the city. And so for that reason, I've chosen not to hire a lobbying firm and I've chosen not to hire any kind of firm to deal with the speaker's race particularly. I do understand why some make that decision. I just personally chose not to and I won't for the duration of the speaker's race. I think I have an awesome team that I've put together to help guide us thus far. I think we're doing a great job.
What is that, what does that team, what does that mean? What does that look like?
Oh, we have people who volunteer their time. There are people who worked on my campaign and have been working on my campaign since the beginning and I'm very confident in the team that's around me, helping make some of the decisions that we are doing as we move forward, just generally speaking.
Councilmember Carnegie?
So I think that my retention of outside help for the speaker's race is really a commitment, a testament to my commitment to wanting to be the best at being the speaker. And we hired people who could sit and help me understand issues that may have not been in my purview as a council member for the 36th Council District. The issues that I'll face as the speaker are larger and much broader and have a lot more depth and breadth. And so I sit consistently consulting to make sure that I am aware of and capable of and have the capacity to deal with those issues. So I'm very proud of that decision. Mine is again, a testament to my commitment to wanting to be the best speaker I could possibly be.
How can you make sure that that firm, that your consultants, don't have undue influence if you become the speaker?
Every, I think I have some of the most poignant, forward-thinking pieces of legislation and that's been informed by rooms just like this, not by outside lobbyists or outside consultants. So I have no intention on changing that particular way of being for me as a speaker.
Councilmember Levine?
Well, you know, Ben, the speaker's race has evolved and grown in the last few cycles into something which is much bigger, much longer in duration, stretching years, much more expensive, more complicated by far than it was in previous cycles. And so you do need to hire, it's helpful to hire people who can help with press inquiries, with fundraising, with compliance, very complicated compliance issues. When this cycle's over, we should probably step back and reflect on whether it's a good thing that it's become this kind of intense, public, multi-year process and maybe we need some rules that constrain it in some way and maybe Citizen Union can sponsor such a discussion. In the meantime, it's important that every time we make a governmental decision, and I believe that all seven of us adhere to this principle in the coming years, whether we're across the table from someone who is a person we just met, whether it's someone we've known for years or whether it's someone who's worked with us in this or other capacity, that we make the decision based on the merits. That is my commitment. I know that all of my colleagues here share that and that ultimately is the standard we should be judged by.
Councilmember Richards?
Well, I wish I knew I was running for speaker because I probably would have hired a consultant, but I actually did hire one for reelection. I'm reevaluating if we're going to carry them on for the speaker's race as well and how to deal with the issue on integrity, I think, is the most important thing. Each one of us has to have integrity and go with the merits. You know, if someone comes before us, it should not be because they're, we should not carry the issues in particular because they're part of some lobbying firm that should really be on the merits. So I think, just to get back, I think transparency is important. I think accountability is also important and disclosure, quite frankly. So there should be disclosure if you are in particular using a lobbying firm who also worked on the speaker's race with you as well.
So let's talk a little bit more about outside influence in this process. It's clear and some of you have been very frank about this at other forums I've seen or television appearances that I and others, I'm sure, have seen about the influence of the county parties, the Democratic county parties, especially in Queens and the Bronx and Brooklyn as well. I believe Councilmember Richards, you know, you said at the Cranes Forum, let's be real, the county parties are going to make this decision. Can you follow up on that a little bit and explain what that means and what will the speaker, if the speaker is anointed by these county parties in Queens and the Bronx especially, what does that mean that that speaker... and the Bronx especially, what does that mean that that speaker owes to those county party leaders?
Well, I can't speak to owing about owing anything, but I will just say that, you know, each one of us comes from a particular institution, right? So, whether that's working with, you know, the Queens Democratic Party, which many of us from Queens obviously have an affinity and work very closely with Joe Crowley, you know, they do work with members from Queens. And then I think also for members in the Bronx as well, you know, those county leaders work very intricately with members from the Bronx. Moving through the process, you know, it's important to make sure that you have buy-in from people, and most importantly, from members who you work with in your boroughs, right? There's no one who knows their members more than the members who are sitting at this table, because we work each and every day together. So, I think it's really about, let's just get to the surface of it, it's really about being able to convince your colleagues, most importantly, to have faith in you, but also that, you know, we should not fool ourselves in thinking that, you know, the particular county organizations are not going to speak to members, part of their particular delegation, to get input from them. So, I think that's primarily the, how the counties have significantly played a role in this race, and I think they'll play that role again this time.
Councilmember Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, but you want the backing of the Queens and the Bronx county parties. When you are talking with those party leaders, what are you saying to them in terms of committee chair positions, deputy leader positions? Those, we all know, are part of the discussions. How does that work?
I mean, I'll tell you exactly how the conversation goes. The conversation, at least up to this point, and I've had many meetings with individual council members, labor unions, county organizations, stakeholders in this process, members of Congress who are both county leaders and not county leaders, the conversation, at least my experience so far, no one has asked about a particular committee, no one has asked about particular leadership positions, no one has asked anything of me, except they want to know my vision, they want to know that I'm someone they can work with, and they want to know that I'm someone that can do the job, run the body, and ensure that their members from the particular geographic area in the city they're from are going to be respected and taken care of. Now, what other members have told me, who have been through this process many times, some who are still in the body, is that over the course of four years and eight years after the speaker's race, Joe Crowley and then Carl Hasty, or Joe Crowley and now Marcos Crespo, have never once, over the course of four years, called and asked a member to vote a certain way on a piece of legislation, or called a member and asked to do something in the budget. They are looking out for their members, there is strength in numbers, they want to ensure that members from their boroughs are taken care of and are respected, but I do not believe that there are quid pro quos or that there is undue influence in how the governance occurs as the speaker.
Councilmember Levine, I want to bring you in on that. Is that part of any discussions you've had yet? And if not, if there comes a time where you're trying to accrue the backing that it takes to become the speaker, are you against having a discussion around, okay, yes, this person will be the finance chair, this person will be the land use chair, these will be the members of my leadership team, having that negotiation to secure that support?
Well, first, Ben, I think it's really quite logical that members team up into groups to get greater strength around their boroughs. It's been very effective in the past, and Queens is lucky to have a great leader in Joe Crowley in the Bronx as well, and Marcos Crespo. When it comes time to assign leadership positions within the body, that is ultimately a vote which we take. It's a bill that comes out of the Rules Committee, and then is passed by the full body, usually shortly after the new speaker is selected. The speaker's going to drive that, obviously, and the speaker's going to consult with everybody, members first and foremost, but external stakeholders as well, who care about the leadership of given committees because of interest in the issue area and more. Collaborative process is a better process. That's the way it works and the way it should work.
Let me come down to Councilmember Van Bremmer, and then Williams and Carnegie, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Rodriguez.
So, look, this is an incredibly important position, an incredibly important decision that will affect the future of the city of New York. So, no one should be surprised that there are numerous stakeholders that want to weigh in here and that want to be heard. That includes county leaders, that includes labor, that includes so many people, but ultimately, this is a decision made by the members of the city council. And so, in Queens, we are fortunate to have a terrific leader. And, you know, I've said that Congressman Crowley would be a great speaker of the House of Representatives, and I stand by that. Obviously, being a Sunnyside-Woodside guy, we have a lot of local pride in a Woodcider, potentially being the speaker of the House of Representatives. But this is something that everyone, including constituents, I'm sure all of us hear from constituents who are following the race, are interested in the race, are asking about the race, are chiming in about the race. That's understandable, that's as it should be. But ultimately, this is a decision that's going to be made, and that is in front of the 51 members of the city council.
There's a handful of positions that are especially sought after, let's say. You hold one of them now as majority leader, the land use chair, the finance chair, as I mentioned. Do you expect, as you, you know, if you are getting close to trying to get the backing of Representative Crowley and others, that that would be part of the conversation to explain who would be part of that team? And, you know, if so, is there anything wrong with that?
Well, first, let me just say, I think every single member of the city council is incredibly important. Every single person who has been elected by their constituents, who serves in this body, is important and is important to me. So, I would just stipulate that. And I would say, look, that's a decision, again, that whoever is fortunate enough to be chosen as the speaker is going to have the opportunity to have discussions with their colleagues and ultimately help make those appointments with the full support of the city council. That's something that I have not spoken with anyone about at this point, but we are, as a body and as a unit, going to proceed forward with that.
Councilmember Williams?
Now, I wanted to speak a little also on the undue influence. I want to make sure we're having an honest conversation, because obviously, if you have relationships, influence may come in. I want to pretend that, I don't want to pretend that doesn't happen. So, I'm pretty sure that our mothers may have some undue influence, just because of virtue of our mothers.
Mine does.
We can't pretend it doesn't happen, but what we can do is try to minimize that as much as possible, so we're always open to laws. And as was mentioned, try to be as transparent as possible. Someone should know if my mother works someplace that I'm giving money to. Someone should know if I met with my mother before I made a bill and she has some influence. Those are the type of things that we have to do. And in terms of the speaker race, in a perfect world, 51 members would decide the speaker is, and that was it. That world doesn't exist anywhere, and there are going to be people influencing the process. And if I want to be speaker, I want to make sure I'm talking to my colleagues, which I am. I also want to make sure I'm talking with influencers that they deem as influencers. So, I have to do that as well. I think it is part of a process that we can't ignore, whether it is Bronx County, Queens County, unions, the mayor, everyone who may be able to influence people in decisions they make. It's important that if we want to be speaker and take it seriously, that we speak to those. But I'm glad that I also have a record, that no one has ever questioned the decisions I made and why, because of people believing that I'm sincere and making decisions for the right reason. I've been able to close very contentious deals and move forward in a way that's based solely on the merit, and that's what I would plan to do if I were speaker.
Councilmember Carnegie, you have a, you come into the race from Brooklyn with closer ties to the Brooklyn party there. Can you explain a little bit about how that works and what your sort of path to the speakership looks like?
I am a very proud Brooklynite. Brooklyn is always in the house. Listen, I took a lot of heat at the Cranes Forum for saying that I wasn't quite ready to absolve my vote and my responsibility to the constituency that sent me here of over 150,000 Democratic registered voters in the beautiful villages of Bedford-Stuyvesant and Northern Crown Heights. And I still stand by that. There's a process in place, and it boils down to 51 very passionate, committed council members who will make this vote. Now, that's the voting block. Outside of that, there are influences and all these spheres of influence, and I'm duly bound to have contact with them, but I still am naive enough in this process to believe that the 51 members still yield the greatest amount of power in this process. And I'm looking forward to meeting continually and building relationships with every one of those members to have faith in me to lead this body.
It seems obvious that there are certain people who, for lack of any better term, control certain blocks of votes, have large influence over certain blocks of votes. When you're having conversations with those people, are you willing to bring into it, who do you want to be finance chair, or who do you think would be a good land use chair as you're trying to accrue support?
So, I don't want to be disingenuous, but I have a laser-like focus right now on getting the task at hand, which is to become the speaker, and that, my focus has remained there. So, there are these outside conversations that talk about all of these deals that could be made, and who could be what, and who could be who. I want to be honest, this is the, so I started as a legislative policy analyst in the council. So, before I ever got elected, I went, I literally went from the 14th floor to the 17th floor. So, I've been around a little while, and I've watched the process. And to be honest, this is the first time that I saw people who chaired committees were passionate, understanding, and had a depth and breadth of knowledge in those committees. I didn't have to be a super council member, because I could turn to, you know, Jomani Williams in housing and get all that I needed. So, the process had already begun to turn a little bit in terms of it being more patronage, and now more about commitment to the committees, and I'm going to, I'm going to follow that trend and keep that trend.
Councilmember Rodriguez, on this subject, please.
I will be working shoulder to shoulder with county leader Joe Crowley for immigrants' rights. As a leader nationwide, if I become the speaker, he will have an ally, and I know that I will can come with him as an ally. With Marco Crespo, we'll be working very close to be sure that we rebuild Puerto Rico. The 51 council members at the body, they will decide who the speaker is going to be. And what I'm doing these days is sharing the story with my colleagues. My 40-year political activism, gaining their trust for them to know that as a council member that has eight years of council, it is, we cannot let the media to dictate who are front-running in this race, because this is an open field race that we are right now, where many individuals sitting in this room, many of my colleagues, they will decide who is the speaker who will be fighting against Donald Trump, who will be the speaker that will be closing the gap that divide our society with a quality education dictated by the seat called where the child is born and raised.
Thank you. We're going to start with Councilmember Williams here. The city council actually has a significant amount of sway in terms of the Board of Elections, in terms of approving the appointees, and this does relate to the county parties where the appointees to the Board of Elections come from. As far as I can tell, the city council has just sort of gone along with those commissioners and reappointed people, and the Board of Elections continues to be dysfunctional and have problems in New York City, as we've all seen. What can the city council do about improving the city Board of Elections? What can the city council do about improving the Board of Elections?
Well, you did raise a good point, which is we have a lot of control of who gets appointed to the Board of Elections. I, to be honest, I think that it has been some patronage in the votes that have occurred just as a body, and I'm part of that body, so I'll be honest about it. I am proud in Brooklyn that our Board of Elections, Dr. Flato, is a fantastic Board of Elections person, and very proud of what we've done there. I'm sure all of the economists will say the same thing. In that mix, however, we know that we do have some issues, and I, if we can just do some more thinking through that process and make sure that it's not as patronage as some folks may think, we can move a lot further. I'm not sure if we push as hard as we can when things go wrong. We just recently found out, I believe it was 150,000 voters that were taken off the voter roll in the last presidential election. We haven't made as much noise as we could. But as far as the body is concerned, I don't know that we have yet exercised all of the capabilities that we have in terms of oversight in agencies in general, and I want to make sure that we do that, whether it is subpoena power, whether it is making sure that commissioners are here and answering questions. Those are some of the things that I do.
Let me just ask you quickly, and I ask everybody when they speak on the Board of Elections, would you be in favor of removing the political parties from appointing commissioners and going to more of a nonpartisan, you know, like the Campaign Finance Board, for example, you know, nonpartisan appointees?
That's a tough question to ask some speaker candidates.
That's why we're here.
But I will say this, I am actually opening, open to all the ideas that people would have to figure out how to make this body a little less on the patronage side and more just specifically on jobs and skills that they have. Again, each one of us are going to probably say that their person is that, and so, and John Flato happens to be that, Dr. Flato, but I am open to all ideas, and I think the body should be willing to discuss all ideas of how to make that better.
Councilmember Carnegie?
So, the problem with going after Jomani is he gets so in-depth in it that I forget the actual question.
So, basically, I mean...
Just wants more time to think.
What can and should the city council do about the Board of Elections? The Board of Elections is governed by state law, but you do approve the commissioners, and you could help the process with those who want to change it from political appointees to nonpartisan.
So, the question, you know, I will agree with my colleagues, it's a tough question, especially if you're from Brooklyn, because we believe, literally, based on the history of Dr. Flato and his relationship to everything from reimportionment to voter registration to, that he's the right person for it. So, it's really tough to have a conversation that says that there should be reforms when we really got through a process who we wanted, right? So, but I am, like Jomani, I'm open to a process that would make it more transparent and have more input, but we're very happy with who we got, and it wasn't patronage. Like, we voted as a delegation on who we wanted, and so, there is a voting process. It doesn't seem as transparent, but the delegations get together and get to choose, based on vote, who they'd like to represent them. And we, you know, I personally believe I got who we wanted, and we couldn't have a better person. Now, there are flaws in the system that need to be addressed, and maybe it's through reform, but, you know, my grandmother has a saying, "You don't throw out the baby with the bath order." So, I'm open to ideas as well.
In each borough, the Republican and Democratic counties get to put a commissioner on the Board of Elections. Councilmember Levine?
Well, look, Ben, our voting laws are unconscionably restrictive in New York, where behind so many other states. It's unacceptable that we don't have same-day voter registration, unacceptable that we don't have early voting in New York State, which places us behind most other states. We took a good step forward last week with a bill that allows for online voter registration. That was another Ben Calos-led initiative that we passed, using the power that we have as a city council. Undoubtedly, we could exercise our power over the budget, I believe, to incentivize change there more than we do. But regarding the partisan appointments, look, elections are the ultimate partisan battlefield, much more than any other government agency, much more even than CFB. And so, we have a system for its flaws that is designed to guarantee at least that we have bipartisan parity. And I think we should be very, very careful about undoing that in a way that would, that would advantage one party or another in a field where we have to be absolutely certain that there is a level playing field.
Councilmember Richards?
I'll say, I just want to echo the Queens delegation, worked very hard in working to select who we thought was someone who would carry out the mission and in the Board of Elections that we thought was good. I will say that there may be other ways to be a little bit more transparent through the process. I think perhaps, you know, one thing we can think about doing is perhaps holding local hearings, perhaps in the boroughs, so that, you know, the council and others can, people can hear from the commissioner themselves and perhaps raise some question and issues that may be important to them in reforming the Board of Elections. I also say, one other area I think we should focus on is poll site workers, and I think there is an opportunity there to engage, especially young people who want to get involved in the election process a little bit more. I think there is a way to be more transparent with applications and ensuring that we are encouraging young people to also get engaged in the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes. I'm proud of the work that we've been doing the last four years with the leadership of Melissa Mavertito Ben Calo as the chairman of this committee, also oversight the Board of Elections. Political parties, they're part of our life. They will continue playing a role. They will continue, I think it is fair to let them, political parties, to continue making the recommendation. However, it is our job at the council also to make the reform necessary to be sure that the Board of Elections... the board of election can get into more early voting. I believe that we should also try to get a state to allow also the city of New York City Board of Elections to let voting online happen in here too, the city. It's all about promoting, you know, the opportunity for voters to be able to exercise the right. When it comes to those commissioners, I, I agree with my colleague, this is all about creating the scenario, creating the space for members of the public to be able to know who those individuals are, to be able to ask questions to those individuals before we go on voting that way. Right now in Manhattan, we will be deciding who is going to be our commission.
Councilmember Johnson?
So the frustration with the board of elections and the lack of authority and control that the city council has is extremely frustrating, and it hearkens to the other issues that we think of every day. The city doesn't have control of our rent laws. The city doesn't have control of our taxation. The city doesn't have control over the MTA. There are many things that we don't have control over. And so all the good things that my colleagues mentioned, whether it be automatic voter registration, which is happening in states all over the country, both with Democratic and Republican legislatures, whether it be no absentee voting, no excuse absentee voting, where you don't need an excuse to vote absentee, whether it be early voting, these are all things that sadly are at the whim of the state legislature. Newly-elected State Senator Kavanaugh has had a series of bills in Albany looking at these issues. So there is frustration. I wish we could do more. I do not support nonpartisan appointments to the board of elections. I believe that the parties play a particular role in ensuring that we, that we make sure that any party that's dominant at one given time cannot run roughshod over another party. If someone came up with a perfect system of a nonpartisan way to handle it, maybe I'd entertain it. I've never heard of that system. I don't know how you take political influence out of politics. I think, given that we do not have a perfect way to handle it, I think it's good to have parity between the two parties on the board of elections.
Okay, and Councilmember Van Bramer?
Thank you. I couldn't agree more. First, I just want to say there is a vetting process, and there is a process by which the city council votes and holds hearings on these nominees. But I want to dovetail on what Councilmember Johnson just said. The real crisis in our city, in our state, is that no one votes anymore, right? There's almost no one voting. That's what we have to address. That's one of the critical issues of our time, when you have 10% of people voting. That should send an alarm bell off everywhere. So there's, there's almost nothing I wouldn't do to increase the number of people who are voting, all the things that Councilmember Johnson just said. But that's also got to include same-day voter registration. We've got to have people able to vote in this city. We've got to do everything we can to encourage people to vote in the city of New York.
So I think, I think most people here would agree with you. I just want to follow up on one thing you said, though. You know, part of the issue that some have with the, with the board of elections is that you have people being kicked off the ballot, very often for, you know, basic marks on their papers or not having a fax number or ways that things are stapled. And very often, those are the, the commissioners voting on that, who've been appointed by the political parties, and they're kicking off first-time candidates, et cetera. And one way to get more people to vote is to have more options on, on the ballot. And I'm, I don't necessarily need a response. If you have one, you know, I'm, I'm a little surprised that nobody has, has issues with the way the board of elections is, is run, but-
I'm not, I'm not, that's, I'm not sure that that's-
Yeah.
Please. I mean, I heard, I heard people say we need more oversight. We, I, I'm not, I don't want to dismiss the answers that you gave, but go ahead.
Well, I would just also take some exception to, to the process, I think, that you just described. And I'm not validating it per se, but in my experience, if folks are thrown off the ballot in many cases, that takes place in court. And, you know, look, if you're talking about technicalities on a fax number and this, and that, or the other thing, I would agree with you. But if, if, for example, you need 450 valid signatures to get on the ballot in the city of New York, to get 450 valid signatures in the city of New York is, is not an incredibly difficult thing to do, to run for city council. And, and just about anybody can do that. If you're not able to get 450 valid signatures, then obviously that is a problem. Look, I want people to be able to get on the ballot and run for office, but I'm just not sure that the whole process works as you just suggested, and that the commissioners themselves are making all of these decisions based on a whim.
And I just wanted to add, anything that will increase voter engagement, I stand for. So if that's reforms, if that's streamlining the process, if that's online voting, whatever we can do, you know, in a district like mine, you know, our voter record is abysmal. And it deals directly or ties directly to resources and services in the community. So I have to do whatever I can as a council member and as a district leader to increase voter engagement. So I'm very acutely aware of the challenges that we have with the board at this point.
The, the mayor tried to incentivize the board of elections last year by offering nearly $20 million in additional funding to the board of elections if they adopted certain reforms after there was the debacle related to the Brooklyn Board of Elections taking off 150 names that were purged and shouldn't have been purged. And the board of elections was intransigent in wanting to go along with what the mayor's recommendations were related to that money. The biggest issue here, not the nitty-gritty around when there are enough signatures, or the cover sheet on the petitions are wrong, or it's not binded properly, the bigger issue here are that the biggest things, the things that could have the largest impact on the public, same-day voter registration, automatic voter registration, no-excuse absentee ballot voting, early voting, those are things that the board of elections can't adopt and the state legislature has to adopt. That is where we should be focusing our, it doesn't mean the board of elections is perfect, but those are the highest-impact areas to get more voter engagement and to make our voting laws less restrictive in New York City.
I just, I also just want to add, because as was mentioned, the primary thing should be getting people to actually vote. And I'm probably the only person who said that there may be some issues with patronage and what have you, and I will stand by that. But the issue is not, as mentioned, just with the commissioners. So I don't want to make it overly simplistic, because there's a whole host of other things that we can do. And Councilmember Johnson is right, and a whole host of issues, the city council doesn't have the authority to do things that we would like to do, to encourage people to actually come out and vote. The board of elections has conducted some, some elections that were huge amounts of people. It's hard for me to get a translator mandated in Haitian Creole in my district. I passed a voter compliance law in 2014, but one of the ones I wanted to add a barcode to see how people, agencies are doing in tracking that, I couldn't do because we were barred by the state. So I think it's important, like, while we're talking about the commissioners and what can happen, equally important is talking about how the city council is constrained. Are we doing what we can do within that constraint and what the state can do to help us out?
Thank you.
And Ben?
Yes, please.
Look, there's a lot to beat ourselves up on when you have 16% voter turnout in the recent general election. That's abysmal. It's an embarrassment. But I'll tell you, there is a bright spot, which is that the number of people running for local office, at least for city council, has been trending up. It's at or near an all-time high. It's, it's now about 200 people every four years. That's driven by the most progressive campaign finance system in America, arguably, with matching funds and limits on the size of contributions, which, which we should be really proud of. And that's partly been enabled by loosening in the restrictions on ballot access. We cut the number of signatures required for city council from 900 to 450. And the days of petitions being thrown out because you abbreviated the word avenue instead of writing it out on the address are, are long gone. And really what it comes down to today are cases of egregious fraud, where you see the, the petition signatures are all written and the names are in alphabetical order by last name, or other obvious signs of foul play. And, and that level of scrutiny is warranted, and, and that's what the courts are there for.
Thank you. Okay, so, yes, please.
The third area that I also believe that, and I have introduced language for data legislation, is mandating the MTA to install voting places, a hospital, a school, detention center, and other community centers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for, for everybody here, we're going to jump into a lightning round of yes or no, or quicker answers. They're not all yes-no questions, but you'll get the gist. So we're going to go fairly quickly. And then I have one or two last wrap-up questions, so we're in our last 15 or so minutes here. So for our lightning round, we'll, we'll start up top with Councilmember Levine, the first few, and then I'll switch up the order. Councilmember Levine, and then you guys can just answer straight down this way. Do you believe the current maximum individual donation of $4,950 to a citywide candidate is right, or, or too high, or too low?
Yes, I, I do think the maximum is right, but I think we should do more to empower small contributions by raising the amount of match.
That's, that's another lightning round question.
Okay. Well, I just saved you time.
So you like, you like it there. Councilmember Richards?
I think it's right.
Okay.
It's right.
It's right.
It's right.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, this is being broadcast on radio, Councilmember Johnson, so you got to, yeah.
I have a face made for radio.
Okay. So municipal voting, municipal voting for non-citizens, and if you want to clarify whether you believe non-citizen residents versus undocumented or everybody, please do, but are you in favor of municipal voting for, for non-citizens? Councilmember Levine?
Yes, it's been done in the history of the city, school board elections and other forums, it's done currently-
Take it as a yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
For legal permanent residents, yes.
I'll say no. I really have trepidation with the Trump administration in right now.
Yes, I'm working with Councilmember Danny Drone. Ben and I, we are the two council members at the body that are working together with the speaker.
Okay.
We've been working with that bill.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, for permanent legal residents.
I just want to make sure we're-
Whoa, 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 whoa.
It's good. Jomani's so excited. Calm down. So yes, and making sure that immigrants are respected in every way is part of making sure that we're not just a sanctuary city, but a fortress city. Yes, absolutely, yes.
I'm not sure, it has to be yes. I mean, many of us participate in participatory budgeting. Citizen is not a, a question that we ask. I want to make sure we also remember, this is a restoration of lights, of rights, because immigrants and non-citizens have been voting in this country longer than they haven't. So yes, I would like to restore those rights.
Okay. Councilmember Carnegie?
Yes, for permanent legal residents.
Okay. We'll start this time with Councilmember Richards and Calm Down. Do you support nonpartisan elections, meaning open, open primaries?
Yes. Yes. Support nonpartisan elections.
As in, anybody registered to vote can vote in a, in a primary of their choosing?
I want to be fully transparent. I used to. Four years ago, I believe, I answered yes on my Citizens Union questionnaire. And since that time, I have greater concerns. So the answer is, I'm not sure. I actually lean more towards opposing that at this point.
Councilmember?
I do not support that. I believe that it is actually a good government position to allow Democrats to vote in a Democratic primary and decide who they best believe shares their values.
Council, keep going. Councilmember Williams?
I'm concerned, I think sometimes the, the party system stifles things, and so I say yes.
I say no.
Councilmember Levine?
Parties are a basic constitutional right, and we come together to select a single candidate to go against everybody else. And, and so I do not support nonpartisan elections.
Okay. And we'll start this time with Councilmember Rodriguez. Would you, do you support ranked choice voting to avoid runoffs? Ranked choice voting to avoid runoffs? So for example, in, in 2013, when Letitia James and Dan Squadron went to a runoff for public advocate, ranked choice voting would have avoided that runoff?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, indeed.
Yes.
Okay. Starting with Councilmember Johnson here. Oh, you got a tough one, sorry. If you, if you couldn't vote for yourself, which of your seven colleagues would you, would you support for speaker?
The honest answer is, I'm not sure. That's the honest answer.
Councilmember Van Bramer?
I think Councilmember Johnson's brilliant in that answer, and I, no, I, I think it's an impossible question to answer, and I respect greatly who's here, but I'm not going to name one person right now, no.
It is politically unfeasible for us to ask this question, so I'm just not going to do it.
Anybody want to answer?
No.
All right.
No.
Okay. We'll start with Councilmember Van Bramer. Give, give the, the outgoing council speaker, Melissa Mark-Viverido, what, what letter grade do you give her for her four years in charge?
I, I think she's done a number of things incredibly well, democratized the body, and really made equity a cornerstone of her administration. So I think she's done really incredibly well. And I think as she exits, she leaves a, a strong legacy of, of building a body that's about equity.
Okay. This is, this is our lightning round here. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I'm not going to give a grade.
Anybody want to give a grade to this?
There are awesome things that went well, and there are awesome things that did it. I think when it comes to women's issues, she, she really pushed that. There should be an internship in her name to make sure that young women have a pipeline, because we're down to 10 women, so that's important. There are a bunch of other issues that I think we've gone better on. I think we could have pushed a little bit on oversight, pushed a little bit on the budget, and I think-
Okay, let me, let me come back to some of that after the lightning round here. So do, the, the, Councilmember Levine was getting at this. There's current legislation, the city council, again, by Councilmember Kalos, who's been mentioned a couple times, to increase the matching threshold so that more people could run basically on all low-dollar donations. Do you support increasing that matching threshold? Councilmember Levine, you were starting to say yes before, I believe?
You know, Ben, Ben Kalos's name has come up more times tonight than anyone on this stage. Maybe we should have made him our second choice for speaker. I do support that bill. I'm a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Richards?
Absolutely, I'm a sponsor of that bill.
Go ahead.
I, I do, I, I-
Yeah, that's good. Yes or no? Go ahead, Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, but I also want to say one thing on this. I think that right now, the, the, the spending limit amount is actually too low. And so I think that if you're going to increase the match number, you should increase what the spending amount is. Some districts are more expensive to run in, more people vote in certain districts, so you have to communicate more. But I think it should be across the board. You would up the limit on the spending cap? The answer is yes.
Now, but now this bill is, is as a percentage, so-
I understand, but all I'm saying is, is that the overall spending cap, I think, should be upped. I don't know what the amount is, but yes.
Yes.
Yes? Councilmember Williams?
Yes, absolutely.
And, okay.
And lastly, for our lightning round here, are there too many city council-issue committees? I believe that with committees and subcommittees, there's 43, I believe. Is, 51 members, 43 committees. Councilmember Van Bramer, why don't we start with you? Too many, right number? Not enough?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Council-issue committees.
Oh.
Too many, right number?
I, I, I think that we could reasonably come together and, and reduce the number of committees in a way that makes member participation much more meaningful, which I think is what we want, and I think what the public wants, right? We want members who are engaged, able to attend the committees, and really delve into the work. I think that can be done with fewer committees, members being on fewer committees. That's going to increase participation, meaningful participation, make for better, better city government.
Any, let, let's just open it up. Does anybody disagree? Anybody want to keep the number? Go ahead, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I believe that every single member should chair a committee. I believe, I believe what is unfair is that we only have 43 committees right now.
Okay.
The only reason why not every council member get a committee is because are, is everyone aligned with the person who is the speaker. I think that there's enough need that we have at the city, at the New York City, to get every council member to chair a committee.
But I, I want to be honest, you know, the reason it expanded so much, it was because of stipends attached to it. Now that they're not, I think it's a great time to have that discussion. To my colleague's point, I think we've used task forces very appropriately, whether the sanitary relief, the gun violence task force that I co-chair, there's a bunch of task force that I would love to see replace some of the issues, so that maybe we can get something done and move on to the next issue. That's a conversation I'd love to have with my colleagues. That's a conversation I'm going to have with colleagues.
I think that there are some committees that probably could be folded into existing committees, but I also think that there are some committees right now that should be broken up. I'm not sure that Fire and Criminal Justice should be one committee. I think the Fire Department maybe should have its own committee, Fire Services and Criminal Justice, and we're talking about the Department of Corrections and the closure of Rikers, that may warrant its own committee. Right now, we have three subcommittees as part of the Land Use Committee. We may want to think about subcommittees as part of the Finance Committee, to have a subcommittee on capital expenditures, looking at the five-year and 10-year capital plan, capital projects from the Parks Department. That subcommittee could work with other issue committees to look at some of the projects that are being done in the City of New York right now. So, I'm not sure it's an easy yes or no, we should increase. I think we have to go one by one through the committees, see where it makes sense to fold certain committees in, and see in other instances if committees should be broken up and there, some of the committees should actually be two committees instead.
Ben, I'll just add to that. I think there should be perhaps an independent commission or someone who looks at this issue. You know, one of the things I would hate to see happen, and I'm hoping this won't happen through this process, is, you know, retribution and other things happen, you know, if you're not with the person who selected as Speaker or, you know. So, I just believe that there should be some independent commission that sort of looks at this issue alone and then comes back. So, I'm not saying people are going to do that up here, but I'm just saying I think it should be something looked at independently.
Last, any last thoughts on that?
Are we still on the lightning round?
No, no. We abandoned that a long time ago. So, to wrap up, the last question tonight, one of the main jobs of the City Council, obviously, is to hold the mayoral administration accountable, to perform oversight. So, if you could each sort of wrap up your remarks for the evening, talking about specifically how the City Council needs to improve its oversight of the mayoral administration, and are there levers that need to be pressed, whether it's on the budget or anything else, to do that better? So, we're going to start with Councilmember Williams and move this way.
Well, thank you very much. And I think it is fundamental that people expect that the City Council provide the proper counterbalance to the mayor. I think that is one area we can push a little further. There were some ideas about how to do the oversight. I think we need to increase the power of all the committees in terms of their oversight. I think we need to look at subpoena power that we have, and it's never been used in the time that I've been here. When it comes to the budget, I don't think we've done a deep enough dive into the $85 billion budget that this body can pass on its own, by the way. That's something that we should think about. And we have to push sometimes harder. It's great that we've, that's a good talking point, perhaps, that we've never had a mayoral veto, but I don't know, sometimes that means we may not have pushed the envelope as much as we should have. I am a person who is known for pushing the envelope but being productive in doing so, and we have some tough decisions ahead, some very tough decisions ahead. We have to make sure there's someone there that has a prudent track rate, not just being dependent, not just being loud, not just being activist, but being productive and having passed more bills than anyone in the council side of the Speaker. The initiatives that have gotten passed, the discussions that helped us get through, I believe I'm the person.
Councilmember Carnegie?
Question again, please.
What specific steps would you take to improve the Council's oversight of the mayoral administration?
So, I think, you know, part of the move from the Board of Estimates was to strengthen the Council and to give the Council its due powers. I think that we have not yet exercised the true depth and breadth of the power of the 51-member body. And I think until we do that, we're going to struggle around issues of budget, around issues of legislation. You know, I want to give Speaker Melissa Mark-Viverito credit for taking the charge on issues that were germane to this body, around immigration in particular, and fighting for that. I think that, you know, as the Speaker, I would do, take very similar charges as it relates to that. I think, I think we can do a lot more. I think the intent in the movement from the Board of Estimates to a strengthened, empowered body in the Council was what we should do, and we should have been building on that. And I look forward to building on the power and strength of the 51-member body.
Thank you. Councilmember Levine?
We can and should flex our muscle more in every one of the areas that the Charter gives us power. Land use, we have a staff of 13 in our Land Use Division, squaring off against the staff of about 500 in the City Planning Commission. So, we really can't do much more than respond to land use initiatives emerging from the administration and private applications. We could be in the lead there. We should be in the lead, but we need to expand our staff to do that. Really, every council member should have access to a city planner who can come to learn the unique needs of their district and, if need be, advance zoning along those lines. The same is true in our Finance Division. We mostly fight over about 1% of the budget. We fight over our member items, initiatives, and a couple marquee initiatives every year. We don't delve into the other 99% of the budget. And again, partly, it is a staff resource constraint. So, let's bulk up our City Council Finance Division and deep dive into every agency budget. That's our power. The Charter gives us that power. That's how we can be truly independent.
Councilmember Richards?
All right. Thank you. I mentioned earlier, I think strengthening the Oversight and Investigations Committee is going to be key in the next round for whomever is the next Speaker. I think that committee really has an opportunity to strengthen our resolve and really digging deeper into what agencies are doing and not doing in this city. I think another option we can play with is definitely more local hearings, more hearings located in local communities, which would give communities more access in knowing what's going on around the city. So, I think that that's something else we can do. And then, secondly, empowering committee chairs to hold more than one hearing a month. And I think with that comes also the responsibility of making sure that there are resources to hire up more staff. As a Chair of the Zoning Committee, I can tell you, it is overwhelming, the amount of applications we get in every week. So, I think that that will be critical as well for the different committee chairs as well, making sure they have the proper resources so that, which would enable us to be more transparent with the public, which then would enable us to hold the administration more accountable as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
As a Speaker, I will defend the independent voice of this body. I will work with the mayor when I agree, and I will fight the mayor when I disagree. I will be sure that the mayor will work with us to really, to pass a bill that Councilmember Kombal has right now, which will allow to know the representation of how much a women minority do making in governments. We have issue of segregation in the City of New York. We have a state of the City of New York that after we leave government, we, as a council member, we cannot promise our children that we are building a New York City opportunity for all. So, as a council member, as a next Speaker, I will be sure that I will work with the mayor, moving our agenda for our working class and middle class, building a New York City for all. But I also will be sure that when I disagree with the mayor, when there's a moment for us to bring the resources to underserved community, it can be a Republican district in Staten Island, or it can be a working-class community in the South Bronx, in Queens or the Bronx, for us to get a fair share or investment.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
So, tonight, we've talked a lot about the different Charter mandated responsibilities that the City Council has, the city's $85 billion budget, our ability to write bills and pass legislation into law, our oversight over mayoral agencies, and the land use process in New York City when it comes to rezonings and how neighborhoods are shaped for the future. Each one of those things is really reliant upon the capacity that the City Council has. The City Charter says that the City Council gets to set our own budget without mayoral interference. The City Council's operating budget right now is $64 million. $64 million is actually pittance compared to every other city agency in the City of New York. We should figure out what the needs are of the Council, how we increase the Land Use Division and make it more robust, how we increase the Finance Division and make it more robust. As Councilmember Richards talked about, an Oversight and Investigations Unit at the Council that uses its subpoena power, increasing members' staff capacity in their districts so they can be more responsive, coming up with a Housing Resource Division that works with members on NYCHA, DOB, HPD, DHCR, and other issues where there's specialty at central staff on those issues. To do that, you increase the size of the Council's budget, you get the resource you need for the central staff and for members themselves, so the Council can use our full Charter mandated authority and be a separate, independent, co-equal branch of government.
Thank you. Councilmember Van Bramer to close us out.
I'm happy to wrap this thing up. Thank you so much, Ben. So, first of all, let me just say, and I meant that in a loving way, the most loving way I could possibly say that. Let me just say this. I support, one of the reforms that I support is that committees, by a committee vote, should be able to issue subpoenas. I think that's a really important reform that would allow us, as a committee, to have commissioners and deputy commissioners come before the Council under subpoena. I absolutely believe that we should do that. Look, the City Council is such an incredibly important body. We are the D in the democracy that is the City of New York, and we have to have all of the resources to do what we need to do. We work with the mayor but not for the mayor, and I think that's incredibly important that we realize that in everything that we do, from finance to land use. So, all of these reforms that you've heard from all of my brilliant colleagues, I support. But again, this Council is the people's voice, it is the people's house, it is the people's body, and I know working together, we'll make sure that it delivers to make sure that we're an equal New York for all.
Thank you. So, I want to thank all the candidates for being here tonight. Most importantly, thank you all for being here tonight. This is a great turnout. Really appreciate your interest in the subject matter. You can find us at gothamgazette.com. Thank you to our hosts at New York Law School and all the sponsor organizations, and have a good night. Thank you.
Good job. Good job.